Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Calhoun Parish Police Jury Thursday, May 6th. Please silence your cell phones and complete a blue slip to comment on any item and submit it to staff. I'll first ask for the invocation and pledge of allegiance from Mr. Markantel.
Dear most gracious having followed, we thank you again for this great opportunity to live in a free country, work together, conduct business as people, keeping you in mind in every decision we make. Thank you so much for a safe trip. Our elected officials today, they have fallen, give them a safe trip out where they're going. We will thank you for everything you do for us. And all the military personnel here, have them follow. I ask this all in great speed, in my precious name of Jesus.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with every team that stands before.
Thank you, Mr. Markantel. Item three, roll call please, Ms. Kathy.
Yes, sir.
Here.
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 Here. Item four, appearance by Heath Allen, Executive Director of Lake Charles Regional Airport. Welcome.
Thank you, President Abshire, members of the police jury and members of the police jury administration. I want to thank you guys for allowing us the opportunity to come and give you an update on our airport, regional airport, south of town here. I would say the world has probably changed a little bit since the last time I've given an update over here, so just wanted to touch on a few things. It has not been a dull moment certainly. Like so many others, like you personally, and certainly like the police jury, I would say the last 13 months have been the most challenging in the history of our organization. And I don't know that any other 13 months would hold a close second. Of course, we've talked about pandemic devastated commercial aviation industry. We literally went from as an industry, and not only as an industry, but here locally, we went from having a record demand to virtually zero in a matter of about a couple of weeks. So it was quite a stunning change of events for us. Of course, Hurricane Laura, regional airport received somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 20 million dollars is probably where we'll end up before it's all said and done. Good news is lots of, we're turning the corner now and things are looking up. Of course, Hurricane Delta, as an airport, as your airport manager, I can assure you, I spent many nights praying that Delta would come to Lake Charles. Apparently, I wasn't clear enough on my prayers and it was a hurricane instead of the airline, but I'll be a little clearer in the future. And then, of course, our winter storm, you know, and the winter storm was sign of a head scratcher. I remember saying back in the fall, you know, I mean, it's been such a year, I'm just waiting for the blizzard. And sure enough, we got a winter storm. So southwest Louisiana, we do hurricanes, not ice. So someone needs to tell Mother Nature. So on three separate occasions in the last 13 months or last 12 months, within a 12-month time period, we had zero operations at our airport. Not another year in the history of our organizations have we just dropped to zero. No passengers, no flights, no anything. So to say it was a tough year, certainly, we can say that. And then finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the tragic loss of our friend and colleague, Airport Authority member, Mr. Rock Palermo. Certainly, a wonderful board member. I know he's a wonderful friend of you guys, did so much for our community. So again, tough year. Just real quickly on the background of Lake Charles, on regional airport and how we operate. We operate much like a business. Vast majority of our operating revenue comes from the 30, over 30 tenants that we have based out at the airport. Those tenants pay everything from ground leases to different landing fees, in the case of the airlines, fuel flowage fees, in the case of all of our other air traffic. And then we also have a small abdolorum, district abdolorum, which is paid for by basically the city of Lake Charles, Ward 3, and then a very small portion of the industrial district of Ward 4. It's levied at .58, and that supplements a small portion of our budget. We actually use that portion to help with our fire department, security out at the airport, which I think makes a lot of sense. So shifting back over the pandemic really quickly, talked about the drop in passengers. We've seen in our industry just a record number of business failures, bankruptcies in our industry as a whole, and certainly that had a direct impact on LCH as well. We lost both our food and beverage vendors, our gift shop, as well as Hertz Rental Car, who of course went bankrupt during all of this, these unfortunate events. So with the loss of those businesses, we also lost that revenue. I spoke about that revenue that we count on for our operations. Fast forward hurricane, different emergency, but same scenario wherein the hurricane caused a loss of 70% of our hangar space. Big portion of our revenue comes from our rentals and such, not only for the actual rental of the hangar space, but the aircraft that's in it that purchases fuel, provides operation and all of those things. So as those destroyed buildings left the airport, so did that revenue. And I'm gonna just show a couple of quick slides, and it's not gonna be full of slides. So this is just an aerial, thanks to Calhoun Parish GIS prior to the hurricane. This is showing our general aviation area. These are all pretty much corporate and private aircraft that are housed in these hangars. So that would have been the day before, and then eight hours later, this is what it looked like after Hurricane Laura came through. Quite stunning to see these buildings just completely obliterated. And most of those buildings are probably somewhere, I don't know, Alan, you probably picked them up somewhere west of the airport, I don't know. But just, I want to show this video real quickly, it's not a long one, but I just want to show, looking at those buildings and where that debris ended up, and this really illustrates the challenge that we had before us in terms of getting the airport back open. And I'm gonna move forward. This video was flown by the Calhoun Parish Sheriff's Office plane by that board member that I just mentioned, Mr. Rock Palermo. But you'll see, notice in a second, just the amount of debris that we had on our airfield. We're Port 139 certified airport, so in no way, shape, or form can we open our airport with that kind of debris out on the airfield. The green truck there is one of our fire trucks. We spread them out on the airport just to ensure that we don't have all of our eggs in the same basket. Unfortunately, we picked the wrong basket for that one. It's actually repaired and back on the airport property now, though. So this will continue on out, and we'll, I think I've got one more slide, and we'll move on from the hurricane. All right. And this, I just wanted to show this, this is actually our inspection software. So we do three inspections a day out on our airfield, and it's all done through electronically. And each one of these dots represents a taxiway light, so a taxiway edge light or a runway edge light. So when you're on an aircraft at night, you see all those blue lights and white lights, each one of those dots represents one that was knocked off of its foundation and basically obliterated from debris flying across the airfield. In all, it was over 150 lights. And just to add, this is a brand new LED lighting system. So we actually got our secondary runway open within hours. So the airport was back open with hours, within hours of passing to daytime operations, mainly because that debris with the southeast winds, it went across our primary runway and spared the secondary runway. So we were fortunate to have that runway, we were able to get it back in operation and return to flight operations in very short order. Just to might add, just a little feather in our cap, that's the only secondary, only secondary crosswind runway in Calhoun Parish, so that's sort of our claim to fame. Three days later, we actually had all of our runway lights back operational, and we had a fully lit certified airfield by Sunday after the storm. And that is a big part due to these guys. We're in, members of several organizations, and part of that organization is the Southeast Airport Disaster Operations Group. It's run by Savannah Airport Commission in Savannah, Georgia. And basically, it's sort of a group of airports that get together and help each other out during emergency situations. So we had folks from Baton Rouge, New Orleans, Lafayette, even a little airport in Galliano, Louisiana, sent us some runway lights on an airplane to get our airfield lighting system back up. Guy in the green next to the truck there, all sweaty, it's not rain, that's actually Airport Director for Baton Rouge Metropolitan Airport, spent the entire weekend here helping us get our airport open here in Lake Charles. So it goes without saying, it's been a rough couple of years, difficult few months, I should say. But with that difficulty also comes an opportunity. In that spirit, I think, you know, I'm gonna pivot from the bad and switch to the good, because I do think we're, the worst is behind us in terms of the airport, and I think we have a bright future ahead. One of those opportunities that has come about is financial relief from the federal government. And we were fortunate that we qualified for financial relief, and I can assure you, we're gonna take advantage of it and position ourselves to be successful in the future. So we look at these funds, these federal funds, that's sort of a bridge to, we've got about four years of time now to rebuild our air infrastructure, rebuild our revenue sources. And I think not only we're gonna rebuild them in pretty short order, but we're gonna exceed that and be able to generate additional revenue that we did not have before the storm. So that's one of the great things, I think, that comes from emergencies like this. It presents opportunities where we can go back, and now we can, we've got a sort of a clean slate, a blank canvas, if you will, to work with at the airport. We can develop smarter and stronger, more efficiently than we did before. And then also on top of that is the funding sources, not only talking about CARES or COVID Relief Fund, but also the insurance funds now, the FEMA funds, other federal and state funds as well. So our region continues to recover, and things are looking up. Darkest days during the pandemic, we were down 88% for the month of April in 2020, 88%. So basically, nobody was flying, and that's pretty much consistent across the entire country. We ended up, ended 2020, we rebounded, ended 2020 down about 48%, so half of our passenger traffic than we had the year prior in 2019. But, I mean, there were definitely days I was sitting out at the airport wondering if, you know, if travelers were gonna come back, you know, because really it was scary times, nobody knew exactly what to think. Thankfully, those travelers have returned, and I'm pleased to announce that we are actually back, as of April 2021, back to our 2019 numbers, pre-COVID levels. So we're still a little bit down on our capacity with United Airlines. American is back, full steam, full schedule at LCH. We expect United to return their full schedule by the end of the summer. They're short on aircraft and some other things, actually not really related to the pandemic. But a lot of these airlines pulled down aircraft and that sort of thing, and it just takes a while for it to ramp back up. So we're hoping once those additional flights come, we're not only where we were in 2019, but exceeding those numbers once again. So other than recovery, I just want to talk about a couple of other little initiatives. I definitely want to talk about air service. We transitioned quickly during the pandemic to a position of air service recruitment, which we're very aggressive. We don't, I wish we were as successful as we were aggressive, because we would have a lot of airlines here in Lake Charles, but unfortunately, that's just, so much of it is out of our hands. But we pivoted very quickly from a air service recruitment position to air service retention. And we started working with these airlines, want to thank the Airport Authority, they worked with these airlines, we actually worked with them on their rents and fees and waived some fees, just to try to keep them solvent in Lake Charles and keep them in the market. We did have a pause with American where they paused for a second, and it was kind of a head scratcher, because we were actually doing better through the summer of 2020. Nonetheless, they're back and doing well. We've got a full air service consultant fully engaged. We've also got a small community air service development grant that we've got going right now with, which we're doing a lot of marketing, so you're probably seeing our ads online just to try to get, you know, as people return to travel, to make them make decision to travel from Lake Charles versus Houston. And Houston's a big issue for commercial service in Lake Charles. We're generating 250,000 passengers leaving per year in Lake Charles, but vast majority of those guys, over 70%, are driving over to Houston to get on airplanes. Southwest Airlines alone is getting 22% of our traffic here in Lake Charles. So that's the challenge that we have. It's just a geographical situation. We're only two hours from Houston, and we're not gonna change that. But we're still working on it, and I think we'll have some success moving forward. So just real quickly, what our, in terms of success, what we're focused on is Charlotte with American. I felt like we, prior to the pandemic, we were really close and making some good progress. Of course, we're set back a little bit, but Charlotte would be a really great east coast hub with American Airlines, so that's one of our top targets. We're also talking to some less than daily air carriers, allegiance of the world, that would be more of a leisure type destination to Las Vegas or Orlando, then finally, some of the boutique carriers out there. There's a number of different new airlines, again, with different opportunities coming about, a lot of travel habits have changed, different folks are getting in the game as far as airlines, and we're certainly gonna try and talk to those. Just returning the slides real quickly and go over some projects real quick. We've got some turn, some canopies that were actually, we just hit the street today, so these are out front of the terminal building, both arrivals and departures, to cover the entire walkway as you unload your car and everything. This is about a, probably be a $3 million, give or take, a little project, depending on how the bids come out, which is a little bit nerve wracking right now, given the market conditions that we have when you're trying to bid anything, but we're gonna, we're gonna give it a whirl. This is a loading bridge project, these are actually already paid for, bid will be installed sometime in June. So right now, we have two gates, the two center gates, we'll be going to four gates at the airport. So that will completely build out our gates at the airport. The airline, the two existing airlines will move to the new gates, which will open up the old gates and prolong, not only prolong their life, but allow us to eventually replace those one at a time without impacting our operations. And of course, we'd love to use one of those extra gates to welcome new air service. These gates are, will supply, the aircraft are often those, not to look at that, but everything from the small regional jets all the way up to narrow body aircraft. So we're, these position is really good for the future. This is 150 acre certified, Louisiana Economic Development certified site that we're working on. We've actually got a capital outlay project that we're working on, and should get some of that funded this year with the roundabout. We're actually gonna move our entrance north a little bit to access that, and also improve, do some safety improvements with our entrance, because right now it's a 45 degree entrance into Gulf Highway. This is just sort of some, I guess, some eye candy, what we hope it looks like someday in the future with a hotel and gas station and a nice entryway into the airport. Just a couple of other quick projects that we've got going on, lighting projects. I mentioned airfield is now 100% LED, all of our street lighting is now LED, 100% LED, and soon all of our apron lighting will be 100% LED, high efficiency LED. We've got a new FBO general aviation terminal that we were, that isn't designed right now, so we look forward to getting that constructed. That project is already funded. We also got a runway 523, which is that secondary runway mentioned overlay coming up. Also, those projects are over $14 million in capital improvements, and all of that, all of that with the exception of the capital outlay being fully funded, all of the other projects are fully funded, and none of that is local funds. It's all grants that we were able to track from out of town, other people's money, which we like. And then last project I'll mention, it's actually a private-public partnership. We just started work on 26 new T-hangers out at the airport, and that's a private-public partnership with a company called Vision Aviation. So we're able to move quickly to get these hangars built back up and hopefully get our based aircraft back up shortly thereafter. So with that, I just want to thank you again for the opportunity. I hope I didn't take too much time, I probably rambled on longer than I should have. But I want to thank the police jury, President Abshire, administration for all the support that we've had for years now. It certainly, we could not do it without Calhoun Parish Police Jury. Aviation in general is just a huge impact. I watched Kevin's, I guess it was last month, Kevin spoke to you all, spoke about the economic impact of Chenault, and I think it's really important to note how important aviation is in Lake Charles. With Chenault, he referenced an economic development study that Louisiana DOTD accomplished. Their number is at $379 million annually in total output, Lake Charles Regional at $311 million in annual total output. So well in excess of half a billion dollars just with those two airports, then you add Dequincy and Soffler in them as well, and you would be surprised, even smaller airports contribute quite a bit. So again, none of that could happen without your supports, and we appreciate it. I'm glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Sounds like you guys have some exciting stuff, and congratulations on getting things together so quickly and back up in operation.
Thank you.
Look forward to what's going on. Mr. Bears?
I'm out.
Oh. Anyone have any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Markantel.
Yeah, just like, did you have any employees stay at the field during Laura?
Yes, sir, we did. We kept a team of probably, we had a full allotment of Calhoun Parish Sheriff's deputies that work out at the airport permanently, and airport employees. We had approximately 10 airport employees that stayed in the terminal during both Hurricane Laura and Delta. Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Allen?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Item five, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Staff recommends one new application and two new renewal applications be approved. Have a motion by Mr. Bears and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move on to item six.
Six, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Bears. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item seven, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated April 8, 2021. We have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Considerate, item eight, consideration of adopting a resolution approving sale and purchase of property agreements along with a grant of temporary construction servitude for the Packing House Road multi-bridge replacement project. I have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item nine, consideration of adopting resolutions approving the following items related to the Farm Road multi-bridge replacement project. Item A, sale and purchase of property agreement along with a grant of temporary construction servitude. And item B, amendment to the professional engineering contract. I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Markantel. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 10, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement for the installation of municipal sewer and water utility improvements for the Hamreed Road Extension Project. I have a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Hayes. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 11, consideration of adopting resolutions where applicable for each of the following items as requested by the Human Services Department. Item A, approving a contract to provide transportation services for individuals who are under the supervision of probation and parole. Item B, approving the FTA Title VI Plan for the Calhoun Parish Public Transit System. And item C, acknowledging the submittal of minutes from the Calhoun Parish Human Services Advisory Board. I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Guillory. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Guillory.
Can you turn your microphone?
Are we paying extra to transport people?
I'll invite Mr. Polley to come up and address that question. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Tarek Polley, Director of Human Services. Mr. Guillory, the answer to the question is no. Actually, Department of Corrections and Public Safety is picking up the tab for the program.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Polley.
Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 12, consideration of adopting resolutions accepting the following projects as substantially completed. A, overlaying of various roads in Wards 2 and 3 of Calhoun Parish. And B, road improvements and modifications on Tom A. Bear Road and Helms Road in Ward 3. Have a motion by Mr. Bears and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 13, take appropriate action on the following bids and/or proposals received by the parish purchasing agent. A, overlaying of various roads in Ward 4. The parish engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of $2,523,559.36 of RE Height Construction Company be accepted. B, Calhoun Parish Facility Backflow Preventer Maintenance and Improvements Project. And staff recommends that the low bid in the amount of $1,989,000 of Keeland Construction be accepted. Item C, bids for signed blanks. The staff recommends the respective low, responsible and responsive bids of Newman Signs Inc. and Vulcan Signs, DBA Vulcan Aluminum, be accepted. Have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Andrew Pont, by Mr. Bears, and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. And is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bruce, last couple trips around the horn, some of these companies, when they're done, they need to go back, excuse me, they need to go back and get their, you know, roadwork ahead, all that signage, make sure they get it. I mean, they make great fish cleaning tables, but I mean, until somebody actually goes and gets them out of the ditch, they sit there. So, I mean, you know, that's waste, you know. I've got some guys, I've got some people that, hey, that sign's still there, you know, and then finally someday, I don't know if they get them or they end up at somebody's camp. But until then, they, and I know they gotta present a problem to our mowing crew, so just, it's just workplace, you know, keeping their work, you know, their workplace clean and reminding that, please.
Yes, sir. Appreciate the comment. In fact, we just had an internal discussion today on that very, very topic, that construction signs aren't pretty to look at, and if they're in your front yard, they bother you even that much more. So appreciate it, and we are emphasizing that to our field staff. Thank you.
Your back.
Thank you, Mr. Bears. Any other discussion? Motion carries. Item 14, take appropriate action on the term of the following member of Board District. A, Recreation District Number 1 of Ward 8. I have a motion by Mr. Stelly to reappoint Mr. Joshua Underwood and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 15 is June advise items.
Move on 15.
Thank you, sir. Before we adjourn, I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege, just a moment, I'll make it brief. I had the personal privilege today of meeting President Joe Biden. I was given 30 seconds to plead our case, along with all the other elected officials that were gathered there. I had the opportunity to present to him, hand deliver the resolution that we all approved last month requesting additional dollars for hurricane relief for southwest Louisiana. As I presented that and had my brief comments and told him, you know, our residents are still trying to recover, still displaced, and we humbly request him to ask Congress to allocate additional dollars for our area. And his rebuttal was, your residents are on our radar and we'll take care of you. So be assured that DC knows what's going on here. He had the opportunity to take a look at Calhoun Parish and see that we're still not recovered, and hopefully that will impact his, motivate him to ask for more money. I also was able to plead with him for a new bridge, you know, and I emphasized the amount of traffic that we have that goes over the bridge and the impact to the entire country if the bridge were to not be in operation, and the impact that it would have to interstate commerce. And his comment to me was, rest assured, we will get you a new bridge. So it was a very positive 30 seconds. It was very quick, but I think it was productive. And it was, he had some very good comments to say about the opportunity for our area to provide new jobs with the construction, with the improvements to infrastructure. And so just wanted to give, take a moment to let you guys know how that meeting went and that we got our point across. So. Mr. Landry?
I was gonna say, well, it's a good sign that he didn't say, I'll get you a bridge if you vote for me.
Exactly.
So he didn't mention any kind of politics, he just said, I'm gonna get you a bridge.
That's right.
Because that is their job. I think they kind of, they should take care of it. It's an interstate system, the federal government should take care of that regardless of who we vote for.
And it was reiterated that that bridge is not only for us to use to get across the river, it's for everyone else across the country that travels I-10, so. the river, it's for everyone else across the country that travels I-10, so. Was it Mr. Tremonti or Mr. Stelly that raised their hand? Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion to adjourn. Thank you.